Good evening and welcome to the Kent City Council Meeting for Tuesday, September 1st, 2020. It's hard to believe that we are already in September. Do want to let everyone know that this is a remote meeting due to the COVID-19 emergency. A live broadcast is available on Kent TV 21, on our City of Kent Facebook page, as well as our YouTube channel, which is Kent TV 21. There's also an option to call into this meeting to listen to the meeting. Would like to welcome everyone and with that, Kim, could you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mayor Ralph.
Here.
Council President Troutner.
Here.
Councilmember Boyce.
Here, sorry.
Councilmember Fincher.
Here.
Councilmember Cor. Councilmember Larmour.
Here.
Councilmember Michaux.
Here.
Councilmember Thomas. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Kim. With that, we will move on to item number three, which is the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda from council administration or staff?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Would like to recommend that council add an item eight, I, an excused absence for councilmember Thomas, who contacted me a few moments ago to let me know he would not be able to attend this evening.
All right. With that addition, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I approve the agenda with those changes.
Second.
Right of the motion to second, all those in favor?
I.
Hi.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Okay, we are going to move on to public communications, that is the bulk of our agenda this evening. We've got some, some great things and great people in this community to celebrate this evening. We are going to start out with our employee of the month, it's our September 2020 Employee of the Month. Every month, city employees can nominate one of their fellow coworkers for the honor of being employee of the month and it's, they can nominate them for a special project that they've done, or just the day-to-day embodiment of our values and goals here at the City of Kent. And I will tell you that I believe that this, our September employee is a good representation of both of those things. I am proud to announce that Brian Stewart is our September Employee of the Month. Brian was hired on on September 8th, 2005, as a temporary teen recreation leader in the Parks Department. From there, he became the co-director of Camp Waukeah Paula in April of 2006. He then moved on to regular full-time youth and teen parks program specialist in November of 2006. It was February 1st, 2011 that he began his current role as a Parks Program Coordinator. Brian is responsible for providing professional level duties in the development and coordination of a variety of complex youth and teen recreational, educational, cultural, artistic, leisure, and fitness programs. Over the years, he has helped successfully support many of our long-running parks programs by developing, organizing, and analyzing the recreational needs of our community. One of the reasons Brian was nominated for this award is because throughout the COVID-19 pandemic, Brian has been out within our community continually partnering, partnering to just deliver food and meals to those areas of the city that are in need. It was noted that Brian does these things from his heart. If you know Brian, that is a very, very true statement. He is not only a role model for all participants' lives he touches, but for fellow members of the City of Kentine. Brian continuously supports our values and we celebrate him as September's Employee of the Month. Please join me in congratulating Brian Stewart. All right, we are going to move on to the next item, which is the appointments of not, of the non-law enforcement representatives to the Valley Independent Investigation Team. Want to talk very high level about what this is and then I will turn it over to the chief for a few comments, so that, so Kent, the City of Kent, Kent Police Department has been doing independent investigations into law enforcement issues and officer-involved shootings for many years prior to the passing of I-940. We've been recognized as a standard for which law enforcement agencies work towards. We, with the passing of I-940, we have opened up the application process to our Diversity Task Force and Cultural Community Boards, because we were looking for members of the community, non-law enforcement representatives, to serve on this committee. So we opened it up to our Diversity Task Force and Cultural Community Boards and we received three applicants, one of whom dropped out at the last minute. We conducted screening interviews and have selected Todd Minor and Pastor Lawrence Bowles to serve on this committee. This is an extremely important enhancement to our independent investigation process, not only to comply with the law, but to take a major step to including community members as a part of the process, which will continue to assure transparency and accountability. With that, Chief, I'm going to turn it over to you for an explanation of the duties of this board.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In essence, in the spirit of the law, these non-law enforcement representatives on the investigation team really serve to be the eyes and ears for the community to ensure that the community interests are being met and there is compliance and accountability in the law, by the law. And so we're very pleased to add this enhancement to our team. So the duties are laid out very clearly in the law itself and primarily the role starts with the vetting of the qualifications and the personnel record of the investigators involved on the team. The role of our new members will be to vet the credentials, look at resumes, look at work performance, and make sure they're one in line with what the law requires, but two, also in line with standards in regards to performance and, and job-related function and discipline records, that's the word I was looking for. So that's the first thing. Then on it, from there, on a case-by-case basis, as we have these events occur, our members, our non-law enforcement members will be responsible for vetting and de-conflicting any investigators that may have a relationship with the involved officer to ensure there isn't a conflict. So they will look, all of the investigators are required to fill out a conflict of interest form, advising whether they have had any relationship whatsoever with the officer that is being investigated for being involved in the shooting. And they have the authority under the law to say, yes, this person can, is qualified and cleared to do an investigation, or no, there's, there's a conflict and they should not be involved and can remove them from doing the investigation. So they really have a hands-on role on these case-by-case incidents. In addition to that, they receive access to the full briefings that I receive as the Chief of Police and updates on the case as to what's going on and what progress has been made. They get forewarning and advance notice of any press releases and information going out to the media and they also conserve another capacity related to assisting the team with relations with the families and whatnot. So it's a very active role, they have full access to the data, the information, the evidence, and they are aware of what's going on as the investigation is being conducted. So in a nutshell, that's what we've asked them to do. Part of what we will do to get them up to speed is provide them with training on the law and the requirements, and also training in terms of our investigation practices and why it is that certain evidence procedures are followed and how it's done that way. So again, very welcoming of this enhancement to our team. This addition sets us apart, makes us, I think, one of only maybe two independent investigation teams in the state that is in full compliance, has members onboard, and is really a part from everyone else in this regard, so.
Great, thank you, Chief. So tonight, I will be recommending for council's confirmation to members of our community to the, um, non-law, as, as non-law enforcement representatives to the Valley Independent Investigation Team. The first gentleman that I would like to bring forward is Todd Minor. Todd has called the East Hill neighborhood of Kent his home since 2012. Todd and his wife, Tameka, and their five children consider Kent to be a beautiful, warm, and welcoming community. As Kent home and business owners and someone who practices his faith in Kent, the trust between police and community is critically important to Todd. He looks forward to helping create transparency and build bridges of trust in their, with the community. Todd, who leads the business unit, a business unit for Microsoft, is known as a servant leader, a collaborator, and a common sense thinker. I will tell you that we see Todd in the community in many different ways. Back when we were meeting in person, attended a lot of, of city council meetings. He's a member of the Diversity Task Force. And if you get a chance, I strongly recommend swinging by his restaurant up on East Hill, Nana's. With that, Mr. Minor, I would love to turn it over to you to say a few words.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I just, I'm humbled by the opportunity to continue to serve this city. I do think, you know, given the current environment, we need to have more collaboration between the community and government. And I thank the chief for always reaching out to the community to invite to be part of this process. I look forward to serving as the eyes and ears for my fellow residents in the city of Kent and helping, you know, carry the messages of the truth of what's going on with any of these shootings. So hopefully, there's not a ton of them, or a lot of them, or any of them, but we know that that is probably not the case and I'll be willing to serve in this capacity. So again, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Todd. The next nominee that I am bringing forward for council confirmation is Dr., I don't know ever how to do this right, Dr. Bowles, Dr. Pastor Bowles or Pastor Dr. Bowles. Want to make sure that you get credit for all of the hard work that you have done. Pastor Bowles is the founder and leader of Redeemed by the Blood Pentecostal Church right here in Kent, along with his wife, Lady Jacqueline Bowles. The church has had a very strong presence in our community since its founding in 2012. Pastor Bowles has also founded the Team Redeemed Life Center and serves as the Executive Director of this community-based program that supports local police departments and other law enforcement agencies in conducting educational outreach and activities in the City of Kent for at-risk youth and teens involved in gang-related activities. He's also established a community initiative called Men and Women That Care, which serves as a positive force in an area, in areas known for high crime and other illegal activities. Pastor Bowles is an author, as well as a doctor. He's got his doctorate in divinity from St. Thomas Christian University in Florida. Pastor Bowles serves on our Diversity Task Force as well. Many of you have seen him in the community, he's doing really, really great work for the city. It's one of those, one of those community members that you know if he says something, he's going to do something, it's, it's a lot of action, more action than talk. And for, for that, I am extremely grateful. Pastor Bowles, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, just to briefly begin, my friends call me Chris. Madam Mayor, you're more than welcome to call me Chris.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for the warm introduction. Thank you to the chief and thank you for my friend Todd and to the entire city council. I'm so honored to make history with the entire family of Kent. This is monumental, this is truly a blessing. We have a great work of accountability ahead of us and I'm just so honored that you all selected me and I was just as open to, to receive this great service, this great work, because I really believe as you all have selected us, we are indeed going to be the great face of our great city. So again, we look, I look forward to the work that's ahead of us. We hope that there's not as much as Todd stated and we're going to definitely support this initiative. We're going to support our community and we're going to support all of our leaders here in the great city of Kent. Thank you again, Madam Mayor and Chief Padilla.
Right, thank you, Pastor Bowles. So with that, like I said, the, the item is under the, on consent calendar this evening, item number H, and I'm asking that council confirm the appointment of both Mr. Minor and Pastor Bowles. All right, we are going to move on in the agenda to the proclamation section. We have four proclamations this evening. The first one is for National Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. And I do want to recognize, listening into the meeting tonight, we have Siobhan Scrivener, Heather Kennedy, Abby Armstrong, and they're here on behalf of the Strong Cares Guild, which raises money for Seattle Children's Cancer Research. And they are all moms of children that are fighting or have fought cancer. I'm going to read this proclamation and then we also have a special guest tonight following this. Whereas pediatric cancer is the leading cause of death by disease in children, and whereas one in 285 children in the United States will be diagnosed by their 20th birthday, and whereas 80% of childhood cancer cases are diagnosed only after this disease has metastasized and spread to other parts of the body, and whereas 2/3 of childhood cancer patients will have long-lasting chronic conditions as a result of treatment. And whereas there have been 20, has been a 24% increase in pediatric cancer cases over the last 40 years, equal to 43 children per day or 15,780 children a year diagnosed with cancer in the United States. And whereas the National Cancer Institute recognized the unique research needs of childhood cancer and increased funding to conduct this research. And whereas researchers and healthcare professionals work diligently to dedicate their expertise to treat and cure children with cancer. And whereas too many children are affected by this deadly disease and more must be done to raise awareness and find a cure for all childhood cancers. Now therefore, I, Dana Ralph, Mayor of the City of Kent, proclaim September 2020 as National Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in Kent, Washington. And I encourage all people in Kent to join me in this special observance. We are very, very fortunate here in the City of Kent to have a community that cares deeply about finding a cure for childhood cancer with our Relay for Life Teams and many other organizations that are supporting the research being done. And a lot of that is being done at Children's Hospital. I want to say thank you to the moms from Strong Cares Guild for raising money and also want to encourage you in the battles you are all fighting every day to make sure that your children are healthy. With that, I am going to turn it over to Stacy Judge. She is a member of the City of Kent family and from our Kent Police Department and childhood cancer touched her family last year. And so Stacy, do you want to say a few words?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Ralph. First, I would like to recognize, I said I wasn't going to cry until I heard there are other moms on the call. I would like to recognize and say hello to the other moms from the Strong Cares Guild. It makes me feel really good that you're here. I want to thank Mayor Ralph, Council President Troutner, and the other city council members for recognizing Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Last year, when our family accepted the proclamation, we were only four months into Jack's and our family's cancer journey. Jack was diagnosed with a cancer called acute lymphoblastic leukemia. Originally, his treatment was supposed to be three years and due to research that has been supported by organizations like the Strong Cares Guild, his treatment will now be two years, so he is in his last year of treatment. Just to give you a little bit about what he's going through during this stage of treatment, he takes his chemotherapy pills every night at home and every three months has a spinal tap and a five-day round of steroids. And for him, that's the worst part of his entire treatment. He recently in June had a four-day inpatient stay at Seattle Children's due to a virus that he couldn't fight off on his own, but has continued to do amazing and is keeping up with his twin brother. Jack's cancer has not only impacted him, but his brother and sister as well, and our entire family, friends, and his teachers and peers at his school. We are all blessed, we are blessed by all that are a part of Jack's army, including our new members that we consider family, his doctor, his nurse practitioner, child life specialist, and all that are a part of his care at Seattle Children's. We are truly blessed to have that in our backyard. There are also other local organizations that have become a part of our family, such as Footprints of Fight and the See Your Later Foundation. They are amazing and have been alongside of us through this entire journey. It never ceases to amaze me how many families I meet in some way or another that have experienced childhood cancer or are currently experiencing childhood cancer. September is important to us because it gives us, childhood cancer families, the opportunity to let others peek inside our world and ask for help in honor of the families we have met and supported through our own heartbreak. And that last statement is something that I saw today on Facebook from a group called Momcology and I thought it really summed up the purpose for this proclamation well. So I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you, Stacy, and I want, I want everyone to know that here at the City of Kent and our residents are fighting alongside with you all because we know, we know that there's survivors in every single one of your kids and we are proud, proud to stand alongside you as you walk on this journey. Thank you for your willingness to share.
Thank you.
Okay, hard transition, right? The next proclamation we have is for National Recovery Month and it's about a healing of another kind. Proclamation says, whereas behavioral health is an essential part of one's overall health and wellness, and whereas prevention of mental and substance abuse disorders works, treatment is effective and recovery is possible. And whereas recovery is a process and that people recover in our local area and around the nation, and whereas preventing and overcoming mental and substance use And whereas preventing and overcoming mental and substance use disorders is essential to achieving healthy lifestyles, both physically and emotionally. And whereas an estimated 400,000 people in King County are affected by these conditions. And whereas we must encourage relatives and friends of people with mental and/or substance use disorders to implement preventative measures, recognize the signs of a problem, and guide those in need to appropriate treatment and recovery support services. And whereas we recognize four dimensions of recovery from mental health and substance use disorders, health, home, purpose, and community. And whereas to help more people achieve and sustain long-term recovery, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy, King County, and the City of Kent invite all residents of Kent to participate in National Recovery Month. And now therefore I, Dana Ralph, Kent Mayor, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2020 as National Recovery Month in Kent, Washington, and call upon the people of Kent to observe this month with appropriate programs, activities, and ceremonies to support King County's Recovery Month theme, which is rising above it all, wellness, resilience, and recovery. I want to encourage anyone listening tonight, if you have a friend, a family member, or yourself that are dealing with a mental health or substance abuse issue, please reach out. There is help available in King County, a lot of different services. We want to make sure that everyone is connected to the services that they need in order for them to be able to live happy, healthy, prosperous lives and, and be a strong part of this community. So please know that there is support out there for you and we encourage you to reach out. Okay, the next proclamation we have is for Constitution Week. And I do want to recognize Linda Hansen, who is listening in tonight. She is the chaplain of, she is the chaplain of the Lakota Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution. And the proclamation tonight says, whereas September 1st, 2020 marks the 233rd anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17 through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore I, Dana Ralph, Mayor of the City of Kent, do hereby proclaim September 17 through September 23rd, 2020, as Constitution Week in the City of Kent and encourage our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering the lost rights may never be regained. Thank you very much. That's an important milestone, 233 years since the drafting of the Constitution. The next proclamation I have this evening is a very special one. Joining us on the line or listening in on the line is Mike Heinisch. And he is the Director at Kent Youth and Family Services. I am extremely proud of the work that KYFS has been doing in our community for, for many, many years in supporting families and youth through a variety of different programs. We'll read about them in the proclamation. And want to say a special thank you to Mike Heinisch as he will be retiring this year from, from leading this organization. It would not be a strong and important part of our community today if it wasn't for Mike's leadership over the, the past many years. So I'm going to go ahead and read this proclamation. And it highlights many of the great things that KYFS is doing in our community. Whereas Kent Youth and Family Services was established as the sixth chamber and all volunteer drop-in effort is a place for troubled youth struggling with drug, alcohol, and mental, and mental illness by concerned Kent parents, Kent School District administrators, and teachers, the City of Kent and the Kent Police Department on September 21st, 1970. And whereas the sixth chamber located in a donated house on Fourth Avenue began growing as a place for youth to receive support services and operating as Kent Valley Youth Services was relocated to the newly-built Kent Commons during the mid-'70s. And whereas Kent Valley Youth Services continued to grow, as did the City of Kent necessitating greater need for Kent Common space for parks and recreation programs in the early '80s, the City of Kent assisted Kent Valley Youth Services in relocating to the Titus Building, purchased by Kent Valley Youth Services Board of Directors. And they changed the name to Kent Youth and Family Services where KYFS remains today. And whereas initial funding of what is now KYFS was secured in the early '70s through the original United States Federal Youth Alcohol and Drug Prevention Program, which required grant application sponsorship from a local law enforcement agency provided to KYFS by the Kent Police Department. And whereas in 1986, the City of Kent established the Human Services Commission and in 1989 committed to an annual human services set aside, providing funding support for the critical programs provided by KYFS each year thereafter. And whereas KYFS has grown into a multi-service agency of 100-plus professionals, professional staff touching the lives of some 10,000 children, youth, and their families annually by providing early childhood education, the after-school youth development program, transitional housing for homeless youth and young adult, adult mothers and their children, and behavioral health treatment services, partnering with the Kent Police on commercially sexually exploited children advocacy project. And whereas the City of Kent has demonstratively been a partner of Kent Youth and Family Services since their beginning as Sixth Chamber in 1970. And whereas the contribution KYFS has made to the quality of life in Kent and across the Kent School District, unquestionably contributing to the Kent community, providing hope for a better future for hundreds of thousands of children, youth, and families in our Kent community for over 50 years. Now therefore I, Dana Ralph, Mayor of Kent, do hereby proclaim September 21st, 2020, as Kent Youth and Family Services Day in Kent, Washington. And I encourage all people of Kent to, to join me in recognizing the contributions Kent Youth and Family Services have made to our city and its residents. I am so proud to be able to present this proclamation this evening. KYFS is such an important part of our community, providing so many services and resources, guidance for youth, help to our parents, just overall supporting the well-being of our community. The work is, is amazing. And we listed off some of the many examples of partnerships and that list continues to grow. And I just want to say thank you so much to Mike Heinisch for leading this organization and supporting and loving the Kent community for so long. We are, we are very fortunate to have KYFS and Mike in our community. Okay, with that, we are going to move on to community events. I will first ask Council President Troutner if she has any events.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I can just take a moment too and say congratulations to Mike Heinisch. And thank you for all that you have done for the families and the young people in our community. You will be greatly missed. For those of you that had a chance to attend any of the SSO Showware Drive-In movies, you know that sadly those ended last Sunday night. I want to thank the Kent Downtown Partnership and the Lions Club for your sponsorship. And again, thank anyone that participated. It was really a great time for families in our community to come together several evenings during the week and you just enjoy a good time. So thank you much, so much to everyone that participated in that. And we have nothing coming up at the moment. So that's all I have to report. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. I am now going to turn it over to Pastor Bowles to talk about an upcoming community event.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor. I am honored and grateful that we have literally made residents here in the city of Kent. At first, we were just renting for the last almost six years now here in the city of Kent. And we have partnered with a 51-year-old daycare center, which it was ran and owned by my mother-in-law, which is now being operated by my wife Jacqueline Bowles and my sister-in-law, and Julia Hicks-Maxi. And we, as well as the Team Redeemed Life Center and the Redeemed by the Blood Church, we have came in partnership in purchasing a $2.1 million property there on Central Avenue there in the city of Kent. We have officially purchased it. We got the key, we have the keys. We have an upcoming ribbon-cutting ceremony this Saturday, the 5th, at 1:00 PM on the property. It's at 703 Central Avenue South, Kent, Washington, 98032. If you go onto my Facebook page, the flyer will be circulating throughout that. And I want to thank and appreciate all of our city officials for your support and for making us feel so welcome to the city of Kent. But I want to invite everybody, all of our community members, all of our community partners, all of our community to this monumental event. It will, you do have to have your face mask and we will be practicing social distancing. There will not be any refreshments and things of that nature. We want to definitely respect the CDC rules and guidelines. So again, thank you for this space and we want to welcome everyone this Saturday at 1:00 PM.
All right. Thank you, Pastor Bowles. Any other community events from council members? Okay, I am not seeing any hands raised. We will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is reports from council and staff. And this is an opportunity that you have to hear from, from council members about the work that they're doing outside of the council meetings and committee of poll meetings representing the city of Kent at the regional, at the regional level. I will start with a brief report. I can tell you that for the last several weeks, the primary focus of the work that I've been doing is around budget. We'll be presenting, I'll be presenting my budget to the council at the end of September. And all of the departments have been working hard on, on bringing their, their budgets forward. And we're in the final phases of making those decisions. We also worked with council, had a great budget retreat here a couple of weeks ago. And they were very helpful in providing input on things that they would like to see in this upcoming budget. I will say I am extremely grateful for the hard work that this entire city did back in May when we had to make some extremely difficult cuts to our budget as a result of the impacts of COVID. And we were very purposeful at the time to make deep enough cuts that we would not have to go through a, a second round of drastic budget cuts. And I am, I am very proud to say that the budget that I will be presenting at the end of this month really is a status quo budget. And it's 100% because of the hard work that was done, like I said, back in May and the work of this council in making sure that we had rainy day reserves. And we were in a, in a position to weather this storm. And if it wouldn't have been for that very, very frugal, those frugal fiscal decisions, we wouldn't have been in such a good place to weather this. So more to come on that in upcoming weeks. I also was able to attend a great community event at our Paradise Parking Lots at Hillside Church. That is a community garden that is run by World Relief. The King County Executive Dow Constantine rolled out his updated version of the Strategic Climate Action Plan and chose to roll that plan out at the Paradise Parking Lots here on the East Hill. So it's a great way for the work that's being done in our community around sustainable food production, culturally responsible and responsive food and climate because of all of the different rain gardens and, and water catchment, storm, stormwater treatment programs that are actually happening there at that garden. So want to say thank you to the, all, all the volunteers that make that program work. And I'm very proud of the fact that Kent is at the forefront of that Strategic Climate Action Plan that the executive rolled out. Final part of my report is a huge thank you. So the, the communications and multimedia team, our interns, put together a fantastic event for our community that took place last Friday. We had 50, over 50 volunteers. A ton of our parks folks came out and, and community volunteers. And we were able to serve the Kent community in what I, I really do believe was a celebration. We were able to pass out probably close to 7,500 face masks, hand sanitizers, and somewhere in the neighborhood of 1,200 to 1,300 boxes of food to our community. So the lines were long. It was a very extremely organized event at Showware Center on Friday. Really proud of all of the volunteers, city employees, and community members that came together to make that event a success. So you'll be seeing fabulous Kent masks all around town. We do have some left available. So stay tuned to our social media channels as well as our website for upcoming dates and places where you can get a mask if you were not able to make it down to the event. But just a big thank you to everyone that came out to make that event successful. With that, I am going to turn it over to our Chief Administrative Officer, Derek Matheson.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Ralph. A couple of items here. As the councils are aware, the mayor, city council, and executive leadership team have developed an ambitious list of equity initiatives in recent months. And the next step is to prioritize and sequence that work. So staff is working on a matrix. The mayor and I will discuss that tomorrow. We'll review that with the leadership team next week. And then we look forward to scheduling an item probably at a future committee of the whole meeting where council members can provide input as well. So just want to let everybody know that those pieces are moving forward and we're making plans for how to sequence them best. Also wanted to let the council know that department directors will meet with our government relations consultant in September. They'll start work on the city's 2021 state legislative agenda. The mayor will recommend an agenda to the council sometime this fall. And the legislature will convene in January for a four-month session this time. The rest of my report is in your packet and we have no executive session this evening.
All right. Thank you. Council President Troutner, I will turn it over to you for your report and the council's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Earlier this evening, we had our workshop and we had two presentations. The first presentation was a storm system update. And I just want to commend our public works and all the crews because when this COVID pandemic hit, the department took measures to make sure the employees were safe, but they still had the ability to get the work done around the city that needed to be done as far as maintenance and continuing projects. So a lot of organization that went on with that and they did a great job keeping everything together and taking care of all these projects around the city. So again, just a reminder that our workshops are televised. So if you want to see that presentation, again, there was information on projects that have been going on since the first of the year, a lot of repairs and different things going around the city and in different neighborhoods. You can see that on TV 21 and the city's YouTube channel. We also had a presentation on the South King Housing Framework. And Haley Bonds Deal has presented to the council multiple times this year. And this was a very high-level presentation, a lot of information, a lot of slides. But basically earlier this year, the city was given a grant along with other South King County cities to look at how increasing residential building capacity would look. And there's a lot of data, the results, and some recommendations are part of that presentation. So again, that is available for anyone to watch and we will be hearing more from Haley later on this year. Both of my committees that I sit on did not meet in August. The Regional Law, Safety, and Justice Meeting will be September 24th and the Regional Transit Committee is September 16th. So I have nothing new to report. I will look to my colleagues and see if they have anything since our last meeting. And I will start with Councilmember Michelle.
Thank you, Council President. I serve on the Regional Water Quality Committee and our meeting is tomorrow. And then I serve on the Human Services Committee for the City of Kent. And we did not have an August meeting, so I don't have anything to report.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Cor, do you have anything?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay. So I serve on Association, Association of Washington Cities Equity Work Group. As a part of that group, I attended Race Equity and Leadership Training with National League of Cities. We had a presentation and conversation on normalizing racial equity. So in this presentation, race predicts how one, how well one will do from infant mortality and life expectancy. In a national study by CDC, they found a black woman, a black mother dies at three to four times the rate of a white mother. A black mother is 243% more likely to die from pregnancy and childbirth-related causes. Racial equity requires target strategies to focus on improvements for, for those worse off and move beyond services and focus on root causes by changing policies, institutions, and systems. We also talked about implicit and explicit biases. We talked about that we need to actively insert racial equity in decision-making processes and talked about how AWC as a whole, Association of Washington Cities as a whole, and member cities, what can we do? We will be having another training in the next few weeks. I also serve on three other regional committees and would not meet since the last meeting. So I'll probably have an update from at least one of them at the next meeting. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Council Member Almer.
Thank you. I serve on the King County Housing Affordable Housing Committee. And we are not meeting until September 30th. And I also serve on the Aging and Disabilities Advisory Council. And we are meeting next Friday, the 11th. So I will not have a report until the next committee meeting.
Great, thank you. Council Member Boyce.
Thank you, Madam President. I am the Vice Chair of the Peak Sound Seat Association. And we took the month of August off and we'll be starting off a meeting the third Wednesday in September. So nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Council Member Fincher.
Thank you. I serve on the MID, the Mental Illness and Drug Dependency Advisory Council in King Conservation District. Nothing to report on either of those. We will, MID will have a meeting on the 24th, last Thursday of this month. And the Arts Commission, I reported on that last time, and we have not, we will not have a meeting. We will have an upcoming meeting on later this month, in fact, next week. So that is it.
Great, thank you, everyone. And Madam Mayor, that ends our reports.
All right, thank you. We will move on in the agenda. We have no public hearing this evening. Public comment, item number seven. I do want to remind everyone that during the coronavirus emergency, the public will not have the opportunity to provide live comment. But written comments are always taken and maybe, maybe submitted to the city council at citycouncil@kentwa.gov. Or if you wish to call that in, you may call 253-856-5700. Item number eight on the agenda is the consent calendar. We did add a letter I for an excused absence for Council Member Thomas. So with that, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I moved to approve the consent calendar items A through I.
All right, there's a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries 6-0. Just as a reminder for our listening audience, the consent calendar is a compilation of items that the council has received presentations on and discussed over the last several weeks at the Committee of the Whole. So a compilation of all the work that's been done in the weeks prior. With that, we will move on to item number nine, other business. We do not have any this evening. Item 10 is bids and we do not have any bids this evening. There is also no executive session. So with that, I'd like to thank the council for all the work that they're doing, our community members for stepping up and making this Kent, making Kent a fabulous place to raise our families and live. And remind everyone, stay safe, stay healthy, wear your mask when you're out and about, and try and enjoy the last bit of sunshine that we have before fall gets here. With that, we are adjourned.